Meeting will please come into order. This is a committee, the whole meeting of the Board of Trustees, the Village of Willmet. I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Barrow.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kurzman.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Plunkett.
Here.
President Blinsky.
Here. We're all here. We obviously have a quorum. This meeting is being conducted remotely via the Microsoft Teams software, and I'll ask Peter Skiles, our Director of Administrative Services, to explain some logistics to members of the public who may be joining us tonight.
Thank you, President Blinsky. So everyone should have joined the meeting tonight muted, and when President Blinsky calls for public comments, those joining us with the Teams client can toggle their mute status by clicking on the microphone icon on the meeting toolbar down towards the bottom of the screen. And those joining by audio conference dial-in can toggle their mute status by pressing star and then the number six. Only attendees can unmute themselves. No one is able to unmute another attendee. And just in case anybody has any technical difficulties, it'll be discussed shortly, but you can always go over to the YouTube livestream and provide your public comment there, and it will be read by a staff person into the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. So for those of you watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a gubernatorial disaster proclamation, which was issued by Governor Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all village governmental meetings that are in person have been canceled, but the state has amended the Opens Meetings Act to permit electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Village Board. We're conducting our business tonight in compliance with that new provision of the state law. Because this is a remote meeting, it is being broadcast live on Local Access Channel 6 and on the internet at youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. And in case anyone's watching on Channel 6 and wants to be a little more interactive, you can go to YouTube, youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. And because this is a televised meeting, it is being recorded as well, and that recording will be archived on the Village's YouTube website. Now, as Mr. Skiles alluded to, a remote meeting requires a different mechanic for public participation. So to ensure our residents, business owners, and other interested parties have the opportunity to participate in this meeting, we have solicited public comment prior to the start of the meeting via email. If you sent an email to publiccomment@willmet.com prior to the start of the meeting, the email has been provided to the board members, but will not be read during the meeting. Members of the public who are watching the broadcast can participate during our public comment period by submitting comments through the YouTube Live chat feature. And if you do that, a member of the Village staff will read your comment to the Village Board in the meeting. And for those of you who have connected the meeting via Microsoft Teams or via the telephone, at the appropriate time, I'll ask people to speak up if they'd like to make a public comment. And because of logistical difficulties of not being in person together, I'll first just ask people to identify themselves as someone who would like to address the Board, and then I'll assemble a list, and then I will call on individuals, person by person, for their turn to speak. For people speaking during public comment, they will be allotted three minutes to address the Board, just as they would be during an in-person meeting. And all comments from the public, regardless of how they're received, will be recorded into the meeting minutes. Now, I am going to mute everyone. That includes the staff and the trustees to start the meeting. So if you're planning to speak, you'll have to unmute yourself, but just for good form here, we'll get the background noise down. And that's it for my introductory comments. Just for those who are tuning in, the committee, the whole meeting is a less formal meeting of the Village Board, but under the Opens Meetings Act, anytime a small number of us are together, it is deemed a public meeting and therefore must be open to the public. And tonight, we are here to talk about the 2021 through 2030 capital program. This is really the first meeting of our budget process. The Village staff, though, has been updating the Village Board monthly during the pandemic with regards to our revenue and our expenses and our projections for the year, and they've done a very nice job with that. But this is sort of the first big meeting for the kickoff of the 2021 budget process. So with that, I will turn it over, I believe, to Mr. Brainman.
Thank you, President Blinsky. And I'm going to do a brief introduction and then turn it over to Eric, who will walk us through the presentation. First, before we get started, and I know the Board knows this, but I do want to acknowledge the amount of work put into this document by the staff. It takes an incredible amount of time and thought and consideration to put this document together for the Board and the community, and it really is impressive. I also want to acknowledge Eric for helping take our CIP document to the next level. If you were to look back at last year's document, not only is it just much easier on the eyes, and I think easier to find information and read it, but that the introduction and the analysis at the very front really helps to focus where our priorities are and have been. And I think it's a really, really, really good communication tool for us as we, you know, we talk with our residents and our community about our priorities and where we're allocating our limited dollars. So thank you to the staff for all the work on that. Now, in terms of tonight's process and our expectations, this is going to be a very high-level presentation, and we see this more as an educational meeting for the Board as we begin to prepare our budget. We're not expecting any final decisions from the Board on any of the projects we're going to be discussing tonight. What we're really looking for are to identify priorities. So if the Village Board feels very strongly that certain projects absolutely need to be in next year's budget, that's always helpful for us to know as we prepare the proposed document. And if there are certain projects that we don't believe should be priorities, that is also helpful as we move forward in our budget process. Something slightly different this year is that, you know, given the financial uncertainty of the pandemic, we've really called the request to a greater degree than we have in past years. So the CIP is a tighter document than it's been, and we had really intensive discussions with our departments about what really needed to move forward and what could wait. And what could wait has really been pushed back into 2022 or 23. So, you know, based on the budget methodology we've discussed at previous board meetings, there's a high likelihood that most of the projects that we see tonight are going to find their way into the budget document. And then, you know, we'll do that further drill-down analysis early into next year and see if we can get all of these projects done if our finances allow. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric. He'll walk us through it, and all of our department heads and their staff are available tonight. So if there's any questions on particular projects, please stop us, and we'll have the appropriate staff member respond.
All right. I'm working to share the document right now. Can everybody see it? Is it available?
Yes, it is.
All right. So I also want to echo Mike's sentiment in just terms of thanking the staff for all of their wonderful efforts during this process. This team, the directors down to the staff level have been fantastic to work with in providing information. The level of detail that goes into each one of the capital requests is phenomenal. And then the follow-up on questions, it has been a great team to work with, and I appreciate all the efforts of the staff. And then...
Hey, Eric, I'm going to stop you for a second. Do we have the wrong presentation pulled up here? I think you got that last...
That's the, right. You sent one. The one that I'm looking at is September 10th is the date on it. So I think this was the original one that you got up, Eric.
I think I may have the, is this the correct one?
If you could present desktop to show that, it's not going to record if you present a PowerPoint like that. I think the board members will all be able to see it because they have the office license, but for it to record, you need to present desktop, and then you can still present the same PowerPoint.
On the desktop piece, okay. Wait one second here.
I was just typing up a text, but this, this works better.
Is it in the PowerPoint view, like in the...
Yeah, but not full screen.
We can see it now, and that has September 10th up, not, not August 25th.
Okay. It's not letting me go into the PowerPoint mode from here, though. It's, it's still in the PowerPoint actual presentation piece.
Well, this, this will work for the recording. I thought you could still go to full-screen mode, like down at the bottom right. No? Just a couple over there. Yeah, minimize me.
You should be able to hit slideshow.
Yeah, right there.
No, it keeps bringing me up into an alternate screen.
Hmm.
That's all right. We can see this. It's okay.
All right. All right. So moving into this presentation summary, what we're going to be doing today is going through the 10-year capital program from '21 through 2030, doing an overview of the 10-year capital program. And then each one of those years, we're going to do a focused review of the 2021 capital program. Additionally, we are going to go through and look at the different capital investment categories. So looking at areas like our investment in information technology, looking at equipment, sewers, vehicle replacement, looking at each one of those categories on a 10-year timeframe, and then also looking at a much more focused view on the 2021 capital projects. So please stop me at any time with any questions you have on the presentation. We will work to answer those questions. And then, as Mike said, all the directors and staff are here to help answer specific questions about project requests. Going into the first overview, we're looking at the 10-year capital overview over the next 10 years. The Village is looking to invest around $224 million for the infrastructure needs of our community. So you'll notice in the first two years that we have a significantly higher level of investment in '21 and '22. These are really related to our investment in the Neighborhood Storage Project. So having Hibbard in 2021 and Thornwood Park in 2022. And even amongst those two years, there is a significant difference in the price of those individual projects. But if you were to exclude those two projects from this analysis, you would really see a fairly level investment over the first five years of this program. And then, as we start to look out into the latter part of the program, '26 through 2030, all the projects get grouped together, and it's a much more high-level view of potential capital projects in the future, such as investment, construction of a new police station. As we move into the focus view in 2021, you can see the breakdown here of the $30 million request for the 2021 proposed budget. You'll see the highest level investment is really in the sewer fund, or the sewer investment at around $21 million. And again, this is primarily focused on the Neighborhood Storage Project. Our next largest category is really looking at our street investment and the efforts that the Village has put towards our road infrastructure investment. So the overall 2021 program has 46 projects. So by way of comparison, we wanted to look at what was included in the 2020 approved project or capital program. We had a similar number of projects valued at a slightly higher amount. This, the differential in spending is really focused on project costs associated with Neighborhood Storage Project, and then the electrical improvements at the water plants. And then the other way we wanted to really compare this was looking at the forecast that was included for 2021 as part of last year's submission. So what did we think we were going to spend in '21 during the 2020 budgetary process? So you can see there were 75 projects that we were forecasting to complete at around $37 million. So as part of this year's budget process and the discussions with the departments, we've really pared back those projects from around 75 projects down to 46. And this is due to several factors: deferral of facility updates, deferral of vehicle replacements, as well as some other items such as project timing, such as Skokie Valley Trail or Central Avenue Reconstruction, where when we have multiple funding partners involved in a project, it may change the timing associated with each one of those projects. So the next area we wanted to look at, the overview of our 10-year program, is really looking at what are we spending our dollars on as a community. We have a high level of investment in our critical infrastructure for our streets, our sewer, and our water over the next 10 years. So you can see we're just around $67 million over the next 10 years of investment in our streets, around, right around the same figure investing in our sewer system. We are investing around $46 million in our water infrastructure to maintain our water production capacity. And then the next category down is really looking at our facilities at around $31 million. And again, the preponderance of this expense is really associated with that future cost for the construction of a new police facility. And then further down, you'll see the other categories in which we invest in for our vehicle replacement, maintaining the equipment necessary for our employees to do their jobs, as well as investment in information technology, professional services, and other equipment. So again, looking at that more focused view for 2021, you'll see our overall categories, again, are heavily weighted towards our investment in the sewer system and the street system. And these are consistent with the goals that have been laid out by the Village Board, and this is just exemplifying what, where we want to invest our dollars in 2021. So the other part I wanted to focus here or highlight is that there's five projects out of the 46 that make up the majority of the overall capital program. If you look at Neighborhood Storage, our Central Avenue Reconstruction, our road program investment, and then electrical improvements at the stormwater pumping station and the water plant, those five projects account for 84% of our overall capital program. So if you're looking to, and that's really just exemplifying that, that focused effort of the Village on these, on these major assets. The next piece we wanted to look at was how are we funding these different projects over the next 10 years? So we utilize a variety of funding sources for capital projects, whether they're operating revenues, grant revenues, or debt financing for some of our longer-term assets such as Neighborhood Storage. And then, so you'll see the majority of our funds are coming out of the general fund. Our next largest investment is in the sewer fund, which includes our sewer infrastructure and our storm sewer infrastructure. And then moving a little bit further down, around $47 million from the water fund. The other piece I wanted to highlight here is that we have received around $600,000 in state infrastructure funds that can be used for our long-term infrastructure, such as brick overlay, brick reconstruction of Central Avenue. Those have not been allocated towards any of these funds or towards any of the projects in 2021 or any of the future years. We expect over the next several years to receive four additional installments from the state of Illinois, so around another $1.2 million. But we are unaware of what the timing will be associated with those different dispersments. So in addition to looking at what funds are supporting our different capital projects, we want to take a more focused view on the different types of revenues that are really looking, that are funding the 2021 operations. So when you look at the general fund, there's three types that are really funding our capital requests. Operating funds, which include taxes and fees, these will pay for roads and facility improvements. Grant funding, in this instance, is really supporting our road projects, but also the Next Gen 911 for the Police Department. And then debt financing options are under consideration for Central Avenue and the roof replacement project at the Public Works Facility. When you look at the SURF program, it's been a set aside, we've been setting aside funds from each one, from the general fund, to maintain vehicles and equipment and to remain, to keep our replacement cycles on target so that we don't let vehicles go too long. But as we will discuss later in the vehicle replacement piece, we really evaluate those vehicles on an annual basis to make sure we are appropriately replacing them. Now, looking at the sewer fund, our operating funds include customer sewer rates, which help to fund some of our capital investment, but the majority here, again, is debt financing associated with the Neighborhood Storage Project, which is planned to be repaid by our stormwater fee for a period of time. When looking at the water fund for the $700,000, almost $800,000 in 2021, we'll be utilizing operating funds and some debt financing, but these are ultimately supported by our water utility rates and our wholesale revenues from our other customers. And then a portion of our road program, $1.2 million, is funded by state MFT dollars, which are the state's gasoline or motor fuel tax of 19 cents per gallon.
Eric, if I could just interject, this is, I just want to say, this is a really good depiction of, you know, sometimes we get lost in our fund accounting, and this is a really good depiction of, you know, really the sources and uses here. So really nice add to the, to the deck.
Thank you. So the next part we wanted to move into here is really looking at a review of the individual project categories. So as we alluded to earlier, looking at equipment, facilities, sewer, and again, kind of providing that same focus, that same high-level overview over the next 10 years, as well as what we are planning, what projects are currently part of the program for 2021. So looking at equipment in the 10-year program, the primary expenditure here is really in 2021, which is associated with our investment in Next Gen 911, as well as cardiac monitors for the Fire Department. So as of right now, we do not have any significant replacements planned in the future years. Projects here are typically funded by grants or the general fund. And specifically, the 2021 equipment projects, we have $68,000 for the cardiac monitors. These were originally purchased in 2012. We started this experience breakdowns at the beginning of this year, where we had thousands, we had repair costs that were in several thousand dollars, and one of our units was out of service for over two weeks. This request is for three new units. We utilize two and generally have one in reserve. The next project is $185,000 for the Next Gen 911 upgrade. So this includes software upgrades and reconfiguration to align with the state mandate for the Next Gen 911. Our Police Department worked effortlessly to get grant funding for this, which will pay for a sizable component of this overall project. There may be some additional funds for training, but the majority of the project is fully funded by a grant. Next, looking at the facilities over the next 10 years, we have, we've deferred our non-critical facility investments in 20, from 2021 out into the next two years for 2022 and 2023. We will continue to evaluate our needs, whether they're HVAC replacement, windows, other building components on an annual basis, and really put those items that are of critical nature in each one of the, in that upcoming year's capital request. But you'll see the sizable contract, or the sizable expense that's out there in the last five years. And again, this is associated with that new police station. We have dollars for planning that start in 2024, and then our construction timeframe is slated in 2026 to 2030. And again, when we're looking at funding sources associated with the facilities, these are primarily funded through general fund operations, but clearly for large projects, we would consider debt financing. And then looking at the specific 2021 facility projects, there's two that are in 2021. The first one is a parking lot paving program. So currently, we are about to start a full inspection of our parking lot inventory this fall. That will develop a plan of the Village facility parking lots that need to be resurfaced over the next several years. So we're going to utilize some funds in 2021 to do repairs, whether it's patching or just other general repairs to keep those, those lots in working order. And then we will add additional funding in those future years based upon that assessment from this fall. The next project that we're looking for is the facility roof replacement. So the admin building that was constructed at Public Works in 1995, this is looking to do a restoration of that existing roof system. This, originally, this, this component of that roof was not included in the 2020 request previously, but due to due to some leaking and some other items at that, at the facility this year, we had an additional assessment done, and the sections above the admin building were reprioritized by our staff to be constructed in 2021. And for this project, we would consider the issuance of debt, because it meets that expected lifetime, that expected timeframe for the capital asset life. When we look at our information technology 10-year program, so again, we are continuing to invest in software to improve our overall efficiency. We're looking at our cashiering systems in the future years, as well as our time clock software. Additionally, our Community Development Department is reviewing their needs for building permits, as well as plan review software that will potentially come up into future year requests. But we are really looking to invest in these different softwares that really give our employees the tools necessary to provide a high-level service to our residents and to our businesses. Right now, our focus is on making sure that our employees have the tools that they need to work remotely, but we will continue to invest in these long-term capital assets as well to provide that high level of service. So funding sources for these different IT projects include the Capital Equipment Replacement Fund, as well as our general operating funds. And then we take that focus, look at 2021, there's two main projects. The Council Chamber AV, so we had originally planned that for 2020. We deferred that due to COVID. But again, we continue to see that need for telepresence. And clearly, the meeting that we're working in right now, we need to have that capacity to make sure that we are being transparent and to provide the capabilities to, to broadcast our meetings and also to meet remotely. The next piece is our GIS hardware and software. This costs a share between the general fund, water fund, and the sewer funds. Our 2021 cost is for Planimetric, which is our building footprint data. And per the GIS consortium that we are a part of, we recommend this being completed every three years. The next category is our professional services. The projects that are included here are Comprehensive Plan and the Historic Resource Survey. The funding source here is our general fund operations. And then in 2021, the Comprehensive Plan is, is the project that we have on, on target. It was originally planned as part of 2020, but again, it was deferred due to the pandemic. Our last Comprehensive Plan was in 2000, and the Village Master's Plan was added in 2020. But ultimately, this document is going to help to guide our growth and development throughout the community.
Yeah, and one of the main reasons for the deferral was the fact that, you know, putting together the master plan, I'm sorry, the Comprehensive Plan requires a lot of public input, public meetings, et cetera, et cetera, correct?
Yes, that is, yes.
Right. So yeah, under our current circumstances, it is impossible. And my understanding is that we were going to sort of move forward with trying to issue an RFP this year and sort of be ready. But again, if, if, if we're sort of still doing remote meetings next June, it won't be kicking off in 2021, or are we going to try and figure out a workaround for that?
I'll jump in here. Yes, we are, the staff is already starting to do some of the front-end work, which will hopefully, which actually you'll see the cost has been reduced from $200,000 to $175,000. We think we can save some money by doing some work ourselves initially, and then we'll be preparing the RFP this year. I think our goal is to move this forward next year, one way or another, and come up with some creative ways to facilitate this. This is long overdue and was appropriate to defer this year, but I think we do really need to move forward with this in '21.
Thanks.
So as we move into the next segment, we're looking at our sewer 10-year program. So our highlights really in the 10-year program are looking at Neighborhood Storage Projects, our significant investment in, at Hibbard and Thornwood in 2021 and '22. Some other major changes that we had here is our sewer lining program. Working with engineering, they came up with a proposal that we would alternate the sewer lining program to an every year, for every... the sewer lining program to an every year, every other year program. This would not reduce the overall funding that is associated with the sewer lining program, but essentially we would double up the funding requests. So you'll see a larger increase in 2022, 2024 and in those future years. It will allow us the opportunity to do planning associated with the lining program and then bid out a significant amount of work. And it's really associated with our, we're having to work with MWRD on some of those components. So they felt that this alternate, alternating to every other program, every other year would be advantageous to the operations. And then aside from those two key projects, we do continue to have a consistent investment in our repair and maintenance programs, whether it's a cleaning of catch basins, whether it's the repairing of main holes, we will continue to invest in those maintenance programs. Our sewer program is funded by a variety of different sources. So the first being debt financing, which includes IEPA loans. And this debt financing and the loans are supported by our sewer rates as well as our stormwater fee. But for those maintenance items and repair items, those are funded by our sewer fund operations, which are supported by the, our sewer rates. And then looking specifically at our 2021 sewer projects, the majority here again is our neighborhood storage projects. And then you can see the different levels that we have for our, our different sewer projects between sewer main repairs, maintenance, work on smoke testing, our stormwater incentive program, which is part of the stormwater utility. We've brought that level of funding to $60,000 based upon our experience in 2020, in, sorry, in 2020 with the number of applications that we've had. And then the last part is $600,000 for the pump station electric improvements.
And, and Eric, just peek, I'm peeking back at slide eight. The vast majority of this is, is debt financed, either prior bond issuance or the upcoming bond issuance for the, the second phase of neighborhood storage, correct?
So that's, there's around $17 million for neighborhood storage that would have to be an additional issuance and around $2 million that is included as part of prior issuances. So this provides a little bit more of a highlight on each one of those major programs. Again, neighborhood storage, when we're looking at dollars for 2021, there are funds in there for Hibbard for materials, construction and our construction oversight, plus planning dollars that are associated with engineering for Thornwood. Our stormwater incentive program is for that installation of green infrastructure. As I said, it was funded through the stormwater utility. And then the pumping station was originally scheduled in 2020, but we postponed it. We're phasing that project over 2021 and 2022, and the total investment is around $1.5 million. And the next section is looking at our streets program over the next 10 years. So we want to maintain consistent funding for our roadway infrastructure, which includes alley reconstruction, brick street renovations, repair, pavement maintenance, our road program and sidewalk. There are other one-time projects that come up that, that include funding for bike path improvements, street lighting, as well as traffic calming and intersection improvements. And looking specifically at the 2021 street project, we have, you can see the different projects that we're investing in. Our two largest projects are the Central Avenue reconstruction at around $2.8 million and then $2.4 million for the road program. So some of the project highlights here, in 2021, we are increasing, or planning to increase the number of alleys being reconstructed from four, from three that were done in 2020 to four alleys. Our bike plan is looking at $50,000 in improvements on green leaf. The brick street renovation is looking at the 300 block of 14th Street. The downtown streetscape work, which started, has started this year on Central, will continue on Wilmett Avenue in 2021. Looking at our pedestrian improvements, we're looking to look at pedestrian improvements at Sheridan Road near Plaza del Lago. And then looking at our road program, which we're going to have a little bit more information on the next two slides, we plan to invest in our road program, which includes a brick overlay on Forest Avenue. Going a little bit more into more detail on the road program, what we wanted to provide here is the history of the pavement condition index, which is the tool utilized to me, to measure our overall road program from 2011 through 2035. So starting in, from 2011, we started to see a significant decline in the pavement condition index. And as part of the 2020 budget process, there was a determination for our goal to maintain an overall rating of our roads in fair or better condition in 2020 through 2025. And then starting in 2026, we have a decrease in our debt service that really allowed for an increase in our, our road program funding to help improve the overall status of our roads throughout the village. So that helps us set us up for a long-term goal to achieve and maintain a good PCI level. Our funding levels in 2026 and 20, and beyond, really look to rehabilitate about 5% of our roadways. So that sets us up for about a 20-year lifespan on a, on a roadway segment.
Yeah, I think it's worth mentioning that another policy change from 2020 was making sure that, that sort of core two plus million dollars of road program funding was not diverted into major projects, still road projects, but major projects like Locust or Central, you know, sort of, because I think that's part of, when you see the 16 to 18 drop, we had some major projects, we were investing substantially in a small amount of roadway as opposed to a lot across a, a number of roadways. So that was another change that was made in 2020 to ensure that we sort of always have that couple million dollars to focus just on general road improvements. Bridget, is that how you would put it?
Absolutely.
Put you on the spot there.
No.
You might've been unmuted on, ahead of time there, expecting it.
And President Blinsky, the other component of that was to take the, we, we used to spend the dollars allocated on engineering and other soft costs that was necessary to the work, and we've now pulled those out moving forward. So when you see a road program of, of $2.4 million, that's 2.4 million all in construction. And that was one of the other big policy changes to, to make sure that we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you for adding that. I forgot about that.
Could I ask a question about the dip in 2025? What is, what is that attributable to? When you see the condition dip from 2023 to 2025?
Dan or Bridget, you wanna, you guys want to take that?
I believe, trustee Kennedy, I believe the, the nice rise you see in 2020 and then maintained in 2021 and 22 is attributed to all the additional road work that we're doing associated with the neighborhood storage project. There's that.
Yes, that makes sense. Of course.
Oh, so, so if I understand correctly what you're suggesting, Bridget, if we didn't do the, if we weren't doing that work, it would be more of a steady progression from 57 to 60, but instead we get a big jump up to 61 because of that?
Correct.
Okay.
And so those costs are included in the storage program rather than the road program?
No, but the road program is funded, well, it's, it's a hybrid.
It's a hybrid? Okay.
Yeah. So wherever we're impacting the road as a result of new sewer, we will charge that to the stormwater project. In some cases though, we're extending the limits if the road is bad and in need of replacement, and then that portion will be charged to the road program.
Thank you.
And Bridget and Dan, please tell me if I'm wrong, but I think what, what that little dip also demonstrates in 2025 is that we know 2.4 million every year isn't enough. And if that's the level we keep at, we will see a degradation in our streets. But we, we have that one-year dip before we're able to allocate additional dollars to get us moving back in the right direction.
And it is, it is one point only. It is a dip nonetheless, but it is one point.
Yeah. And I think the next slide speaks to that a little bit about what we, about how roads eventually will progress through the different surface condition ratings. So you'll see in, in the table that we made significant headway on our serious roads that were in the serious road condition category. We were able to reduce that level from 11% to 6%, and those move up into the excellent category. But if you look further down at the, at the roads that are in good condition and fair condition, those start to shift down over time. And so eventually you'll start to see roads that move from the fair and the poor category a little bit further down until we're able to put that additional investment in in 2026. So what we wanted to highlight here is that our funding levels in 2020, we're at around $2.7 million, where we had created an optimized program for 2020, that we had shifted dollars away from one of the alleys, as well as some brick street renovations. We are restoring those funds back in 2021. And, and the road program from 21 through 2025 is funded around $2.3 million. And then we're looking at 2026 and beyond at around an overall $4 million investment. The other piece we wanted to highlight here is that we're on target to address one of our goals, which was to have all the, all the roads that were rated serious in 2019, those will be addressed by 2023.
And this isn't new. This is, this is what we sort of settled on last year, right?
Correct.
So the next segment is looking at our vehicle replacement at the, over our 10 year program. Again, our goal here is really to consistently fund our vehicle replacements. Our, our vehicle maintenance staff uses a rating criteria to determine the different classes and the, the rating at which to replace each one of our vehicles. I also wanted to highlight that we review green fleet alternatives for all of our purchases to see which of these options might be available for different vehicle purchases. So as part of 2020, the investment in hybrid vehicles for our police squads, but we'll continue to look at hybrid options, electric options and compressed natural, excuse me, compressed natural gas as we move into the future. So our funding sources here are looking at our capital equipment replacement fund as well as our operational costs from water and sewer. So looking more specifically at the, yep.
This is trustee Dot. I just have a question. Just, I was just wondering, so do we have any feedback on how the hybrid police cars worked and where we happy with them and?
The, this is, this is Chief Murphy. The, there's been a delay in production from Ford. So the vehicles that were approved last year and the purchase that was ordered in December of 2019, we still have not received these vehicles. So, yeah. So sorry to say that we, we, I can't answer that question.
So we already paid for those? We just haven't received them? Just curious.
We, we ordered those vehicles. We typically don't pay for them until, we're not invoiced for them until we receive shipment. And I think production is just because of the pandemic. I think that's why production was halted for a while and now delayed.
Okay. So do we have a sense, Kyle, of when we think we might get them?
Yeah. Last time I checked with vehicle maintenance, we should be receiving them by late September, early October.
And the intent was to use this year as a pilot year to try these out and, and get through a winter before buying more. The good news is we only have one police vehicle programmed for 2021. So we will have the time we need before we have to start replacing additional patrol squads and do, be able to do that analysis and come back to the board with a recommendation.
Okay, that was helpful. Thank you.
So as a lead into our 2020, 2021 vehicle replacement, we have eight vehicles that are up for replacement that are laid out here below. Our sidewalk snowplow was originally planned for 2020, but was deferred due to the pandemic. As we just talked, discussed the unmarked squad, which is recommended for the upcoming year. And then we have a variety of vehicles for Public Works as well as water management that range from our small dump truck up to our sewer televising truck and an aerial lift truck that's used by our forestry team.
Eric, what's the designation, class one, class two?
So the class one and class two are really the, the, the class in which for replacement. So they're rated class one through class five, one being in most need of replacement and class two, or class five being new or not needing replacement. So we would, our consideration is really looking at those class one and class two vehicles. And those are really for our public works and our water management teams. We have not started evaluating our public safety vehicles using that same metric at this point. Moving into the water program for the 10 year overview, our future investment is really related to four major categories. Our automated, automatic meter reading program, treatment process improvement, water intake improvements, and our water main replacement program. Our water group utilizes a rating criteria to determine our priorities for improvement at our water plant and other water investment projects. And here, our projects are typically funded through debt financing, including IEPA loans as well as our water operations. Both of our, all three of these funding mechanisms are ultimately supported by our water rates and our wholesale water revenue. Then looking at our specific projects for 2021 and water, our heaviest investment is really in our electrical improvements, followed by our distribution system valve improvements and the rebuilding of high lifts and our water meter replacement program.
Hi, this is trustee Plunkett. I wanted to ask a question about the water meter replacement program because you know, you see in the budget in future years, there's a large amount for that automatic meter reading. If we could just kind of explain, you know, what we have, what we're replacing and what the future is of that?
Yeah. So the water, the automatic meter reading program is really looking to replace the the mechanism by which we, we read our, currently our meters are read through a radio system where we do a drive-by of all of the households throughout the community to grab those reads that can, that get transmitted into our billing system. The automatic meter reading system would set up a, essentially like a mesh type network where we would be able to grab those reads on a more frequently basis, frequent basis if necessary, that we then go into the billing system. So there is some crossover between the water meter replacement as well as the AMR program.
And the six meters to be replaced in 2021, would those be on the system with the automatic reading? Or is that just something that you add on to that later?
I can, this is Nabil, I can, Eric, do you would like me to continue?
Yes, please.
So the 21, just for the actual meters, the AMRs is a separate unit or a device that goes on the meter. So the AMR replacement includes just replacing the actual unit that sends the reading, not the actual mechanical meter itself. And as, as Eric said, currently we are a drive-by system. The replacement program that is proposed for 2022 is to replace all the AMR devices to a fixed system where we are able to read the meters just about daily, maybe up to six times a day if we wanted to. And that will provide great customer service. It will provide flexibility in billing and eliminate the, you know, the drive-by system.
And would that require going to each individual meter then, everyone's home and installing that onto the meter?
Correct. So this is where the cost is going to be. There is probably about a million dollar in replacing approximately 9,000 AMRs. And then there is probably another a million, million and a quarter in installation fee. Because we have to have a Because we have to have a third party that is able capable to replace all the AMRs within, you know, one physical year, let's say, or one calendar year in order for us to have the same system and minimize interruption to the reading to the to the water meter readings. But that's something that we are planning to take to the municipal service committee to give us more guidance in which direction, because there are different technologies. So for example, in the AMRs, there is a technology where we could have a fixed system where the village would own repeaters, if you would, throughout the village. And that system will communicate to those repeaters and to those fixed antennas. And then there's a new technology that was coming online in about a year, a year ago, where the AMRs will actually communicate with the cell towers. So it would talk to, let's say, AT 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 and T network or Verizon. And there are services where we can piggy bank off that. Obviously, there's a fee associated with that. But with that option, then you don't have to own any antennas or any infrastructure. So we we planning on taking all those options in a little bit more detail to the municipal service committee to give us more guidance on that.
May I ask a follow up question?
Sure.
It's trustee Barrow here. So if I understand this a little bit, there is some expense maybe considerable to affecting this new system, whatever it is. It does produce greater accuracy in our in our readings. Does that translate into greater revenue? And is there a break even kind of time when the additional when the additional expense and investment is paid for by that revenue? Am I am I thinking about this right?
The there is no improvement accuracy with the with the AMRs. There's improvement accuracy with the meters if they're old by replacing a new one. The AMR is just a device that communicate to us the the meter reading. So there are no increase in revenue by replacing the AMRs. Unfortunately, it is just the the AMRs are getting old. There's a good portion of them are getting old. And also, the fixed system is significantly better system for customer service as well as finance.
Yeah. And if I can add, actually trustee Barrow, the revenue goes the other way with this new AMR system. We actually may see a little reduction in revenue, but in this instance, I think that's okay. Because, you know, the real benefit of this system is the improvement to customer service. So if a resident has a leak right now, that goes undetected until they get their next quarterly water bill, and their bill is extremely high. Or if, you know, they're out of town for an extended period of time, and there's a burst pipe in the house, that could lead to high water bill. Here, we're able to identify high bills, unusual leaks, you know, in a matter of days and inform the resident, and they're able to fix that and save a significant amount of money that they otherwise would have had to pay for water they didn't really intend to use. So it is a really big customer service enhancement and something we'd like to work towards. You know, the challenge is that this is a large expense, and there's a lot of other needs in the waterfront. And that's something we'll have to work through with municipal services and as we move forward in 21.
Very good. That's that's real helpful. Thank you both.
This is trustee Dodd. I have a different question for Nabil since he's talking, if that's okay?
Sure.
Um, so could you just speak to obviously, this is the two slides we've seen have kind of talked about the kind of the 10 year program for the water program and then the 2021 projects? Could you just speak a little bit to obviously, there's been a lot of news regarding the beach erosion and the erosion, as well as the status of, you know, Lake Michigan and things like that? And do we do we have any concerns about the protecting the water plant, given where it is? And if the erosion continues? And could you just speak to that a little bit?
Sure. So currently, the lake is at record high as far as the level, which contributing to some of the erosion that many communities are seeing right now on on the beaches. The last time the lake was this high was back in the early 1980s or mid 1980s, where it showed that that was a record high back then. And during that time, the water plant in the village did some improvements to minimize any potential flooding to the water plant. So if you, there is a news, the well, back then in 1980, they built not the fence, it was a brick wall around the that would be the south eastern side of the plant to prevent any lake water to flood the plant. They also built the the berm on the eastern side of the plant to also enhance the the overall site against any potential flooding. So there were many improvements that were made back then, and there's and that was during the high level of the lake. So far, we we've been very, very we've been in a very good condition. So we have not had any issues. Right now, I think we look really good. And if we need, if we we continue to monitor it. So if there's any concern, if we see anything that is potentially may affect us or may flood the plant, we certainly will increase our defenses by building more berms. But so far, it's 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 been very sufficient, and we've been in a very good shape.
Okay. And so I saw I can't remember when this was, Nabil, but I did see. I can't remember, you know, obviously, this there were a couple of times this spring where the water was really high and there was flooding into the parking lot, for example, at down at the beach at the lakefront. And I saw some pictures posted on Facebook of water that was actually had made its way to the the I don't know if you want to say the parking lot, but kind of the parking lot area of the water plant. And is that that's more along the, I guess you would consider that to be the south side, not that, you know, not the southeast side. And so is that, does that have any concern to you if water got that far into the to the parking area?
Yeah, with with the new design of the parking lot at Gilson Park, and it there seemed to be a little bit more intrusion of the water toward that area. But that also happened, my understanding, back in 1980s. But that's why we have that brick fence being built. So essentially, the brick fence or the brick wall goes halfway and just about where the hills start going up. So most of the water will stay, you know, away from our parking lot. So it has not, it hasn't been an issue for us inside the plant or inside our parking lot, just right outside it. That's, you know, where the Gilson Park parking area is and the entrance to the to the boarding area.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Right. So with that, that concludes the review of the projects. And moving on, looking at the budgetary schedule. So we've just gone through the CIP workshop. We're looking to schedule a budget workshop in late October, early November. And then looking at the rest of the budget schedule, we look at the budget ordinance adoption in on November 24, and then the property tax levy ordinance and adoption on December 8. But ultimately, what we would like from this meeting is really, we just wanted to review the different types of projects that we will that are under consideration for inclusion as part of the budget. We will continue to refine our budgetary information over the next several weeks and including these where applicable. But at this time, if there's any other questions on the capital program, we'd be happy to answer those.
So look, for people who are watching this in the future, you know, there's an additional 250 pages that the trustees received on the capital improvement program. And I know some of them had, you know, taken staff up on their offer to answer questions as well. So there's been a lot of work put into this, much more than just a a quick 30 slide PowerPoint presentation. But are there questions from the trustees for the staff members here? Are there suggestions or concerns or anything that you'd like to bring up regarding the the CIP?
This is trustee Dodd. I have one question. I was interested in getting some feedback from the various board members on. It relates to the road program or the streets, the overall streets project. So I know I've mentioned this in previous CIP discussions where, you know, I feel it's important that we kind of fix roads, streets, alleys in order of need. So those that are in the worst condition get fixed for those that aren't. And so the question I have is I've noticed for some of the alleys that are being reconstructed, as well as the Brick Street renovation that's happening for one of the streets. Though the condition of those of those alleys, as an example, is if I believe it's in poor condition. I can't remember the ratings now. I think it's like serious, extremely poor, poor, you know, fair, whatever. I'm not sure. But and so my question is really, how do we feel about fixing alleys or some streets and putting money toward that where their condition might be better than conditions of roads that we're not yet getting to? Do you guys understand my question?
Yeah, I think I would ask I would ask Bridget or Dan just to talk about the philosophy there, and then we can respond. Does that make sense?
Dan?
I think I think what the question is, is we have alleys that may not be quite as bad as some roads, but yet we do a few alleys every year. And should we think about switching things around? Is that sort of a restatement of your question? Kathy?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, President Blinsky, members of the board. The rating systems we use for both assets are not the same. The road analysis tool we use was developed by the Army Corps of Engineers that has a standard rating system that's applied to roads. It's not recommended to use that system for alleys. We're not aware of any communities that use that system for alleys. So over the years, we've developed a custom rating system for the alleys. And even though we we generate a PCI similar to the Army Corps system, it's not an apples to apples comparison. So a serious alley will be much worse than a serious road. So even though we don't have any serious alleys, if we use the road rating system, they would be rated serious. So we can provide a list of the alleys that are selected for next year at a later date, and you could drive those, and you could see that they're they're in serious condition compared to the roads that are selected.
And Dan, is it fair to say that, you know, of the complaints you receive, you know, a significant amount of those are about the alleys that are in disrepair, maybe much more so than we get about?
There's a lot of requests to replace alleys.
Okay.
That answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And and once Dan provided that answer, I want to acknowledge, I think I asked that exact same question last year, Dan.
So I I asked the same question every year all the time.
Answer for 2020.
Other questions for the staff? And again, I know you guys have already done work on this. And and again, very good presentation tonight, very comprehensive, at at sort of the right level, enough detail so we know what's going on, but not so much that we're flipping 250 pages and and quizzing people on on which what's the squad car number that's getting replaced this year? And I think I saw that one, and I'm not sure it's ready and all that kind of stuff, so.
I have one one question just for the future, and I I mentioned this to staff today, but I think it would be helpful if we start our budget process to kind of go through which programs might be eligible for grant funding or where we are going to be asking for grant funding. So we kind of have an idea of, you know, what, you know, we're going to spend the money on and what we can, you know, hopefully, you know, get a grant for or try to get a grant for. And I think it's also helpful for the community to realize too, you know, a lot of the central reconstruction, the locust, you know, as well as Skokie, Hibbert, where it's not village funds, it's I dot funds, it's county funds. I think that's helpful to know that, you know, we're getting outside money for a lot of these programs as well.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Senta. I was actually on a Northwest Municipal Conference meeting call yesterday, and, you know, there's more money that's just been approved from the North Shore Council of Mayors coming our way. Mike, it was Skokie, was Skokie and Lake? And wasn't there another one on the list? Do you remember? You're muted.
I was tossing that to Bridget or Dan anyway.
Okay.
I don't know if one of them recalls off the top of their head.
Yeah, Skokie and Lake is on the list. And then the other one we applied for was Wilmett Avenue resurfacing. But it didn't necessarily score well against the other applicants, so it wasn't selected.
Oh, you're right. There's two of them on there, and they're both Skokie and Lake. So.
Probably engineering and construction.
Yeah, I think, well, we had we had the 21 projects that we're carrying over. And th- these are on fiscal year. So I think it's probably both Skokie and Lake just straddling two fiscal years, but for next year. Got it. But that's a great suggestion, Senta, in terms of making making people aware of that and having us have that in our head, too, as we think about the dollars, which dollars aren't ours, in essence.
And we can do that at our first budget workshop in October, November.
Other questions?
I'd like to just offer some general feedback, complimentary in nature. You know, pretty much everything in the CIP seems like thoughtful and is is needed. And so it really is quite a production and prioritization piece is is challenging as as it should be. But when I see that the focus has been on sewers and streets, in my opinion, that's as it should be. That is what residents have asked me about, things that I've, of course, advocated for. And I think the fact that this document reflects priorities that are driven from the community, you know, I feel like I feel really good about it. And I agree with the comments that Mike made previously, that, you know, the even the document itself has been has been improved. So I just share that positive feedback with staff about the document and its contents.
Okay, before before we get move on to item three, one last, one last chance. And please, nobody feel obligated to talk. I take care of that plenty for everyone.
And I obviously, we're starting to get into the really the meat of preparing the proposed budget. So if something comes to mind after the fact, just shoot us an email or a phone call, and we can discuss it and and address that as part of the budget document that we present on October 13.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is item three, which is public comment. And if we were at an in person meeting, individuals be allotted up to three minutes to address the board on the CIP. However, as we said at the beginning of the meeting, this meeting is being conducted remotely. So you guys, trustees, you know the process now. You're probably sick of hearing me say it. So I'll begin by asking people who are watching on YouTube Live to submit comments for the village staff to read. You can find the chat window to the right of the YouTube Live video window. And while they are typing, I'll ask if there's any individuals who've connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or be the telephone who would like to address the board now, I'll ask those individuals to identify themselves. But I'm looking at the participants in I'll ask those individuals to identify themselves, but I'm looking at the participants in the meeting. And I believe it is all village staff and, uh, village trustees. So I'll give, uh, but I will give a minute in case I am mistaken there. Maybe not a full minute, but a few, 30 seconds or so. All right. So I don't hear anyone, uh, piping up. And, uh, so I will now ask, uh, Mr. Skiles, uh, did, uh, were there any comments, uh, that were received via the YouTube Live chat at this point?
Uh, no, President Blinsky, no comments.
Okay, we'll give it another couple of seconds here just to make sure. All right. Um, item four is other business. I don't believe there's any other business. Mr. Bremen, would you confirm we don't have any other business?
That is confirmed.
Okay. Uh, so I'll move on to item five, which is adjournment. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Permed.
Uh, who was that? Was that trustee Plunkett?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
That was trustee Kennedy. Sorry she beat you, Peter. Um, all right. And since we are in a remote meeting, uh, this requires a roll call vote. Uh, so, uh, Eric, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Sullivan.
Hi.
Trustee Barrow.
Hi.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kersman.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
And President Blinsky.
All right. So the motion carries. Uh, we stand adjourned at 8:42 PM. Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.